We'll call.
Rusty Blauer?
Yes.
Rusty McGurran?
Yes.
Rusty Young?
Yes, sir. I didn't say ma'am, I said. I move for the adoption of motion 25-116 to adopt Administrator Lori Kyle as the acting fiscal officer for the proposed taking the minutes of this meeting. Well, she's not here. I need a second. Should we even add that?
Say I'm.
I'll say Chief John.
In minutes.
I need a second. Anyway?
So did you fill in Chief John's name and place of lords?
Yeah.
Set.
Okay. Discussion. We'll call.
Rusty McGurran?
Yes.
Rusty Blauer?
Yes.
Rusty Young?
Yes, sir. Administrator's updates, do we have them? Any, since she's not here?
I don't have anything of hers.
Let's go officer updates, done there. Discussion items. Review the fire and EMS levy facts.
Since it's the last meeting before big day, I just wanted to get in front of everybody, just review some of the facts of the levy that were in the newsletter that you guys should have received in your homes last week, I think. Currently, we have two levies. Three point. A three and a 2.75 for a total of 5.75 mils. But right now, they're only collecting in a 3.28 mils effectively. So the new levy is 6.5 mils. And once that passes, the two other levies will get rescinded. I just want to affirm that with the board that they are committed to rescinding those two levies upon passing in certification of the new levy.
I am. Rescinding the other two levies?
Yes.
Yeah, well, they're rescinding these as we roll off, yeah.
And then that'll be a permanent levy, so we don't have to come back every two or three years and renew levies all the time. It will bring in an estimated just a little over a million dollars in additional revenue, but on what we're collecting now for staffing, operations, and to maintain the level of service that we're providing the community. That's all I have on that.
Don't really have anything to add. There'll be public participation toward the end of the meeting, so if anybody has questions about it, that's when you would want to bring it up. You'll answer every question you have.
All right. Venice mixed-use overlay district. Mr. Young? We're going to talk about your project, Venice mixed-use overlay.
We started discussion on the mixed-use overlay. And everybody that was, that is in that district would have received a letter. If you weren't in that district, you wouldn't necessarily got one, but you may have heard about it. It is a way for the township to exercise some influence over that particular area and how it would look. Mr. Young and Mr. Fair from Butler County are here with some additional information. It is not something that the trustee board can force or anything like that. It has to come, the beginning stages of it have to come from someone that would be within that area. That area is outlined here. And if anybody wants one of these, you're welcome to have it, any four. But it is basically the area from what, what we have changed it to would be from the county line on 128 up to
27?
27, up to the Burns property. It goes all the way down 128. It goes back Venice Boulevard to include the area where Meadowbrook currently is. It is not meant to tell you what color to paint your house, or what kind of roof to put on, or how to do your shrubs, or what kind of curtains to put in. It's not an HOA, it's not that kind of a thing. But its intent is to make or preserve, as Mr. Young said, the area here so that we don't end up with something we don't want. And I think there's been a lot read and written about an area down there where something was added that maybe people didn't particularly want or don't like how it looks. This would allow us to maybe say how it looks through the implementation of that plan. And that's really the nuts and bolts of it. We'll get into more of the details, Mr. Young and Mr. Fair, about how it works. Mr. Young had worked on this along with his zoning committee for a great amount of time. And Janice worked on that as well, and a lot of other community, several other community members did. So, Mr. Young, if you're ready to talk a little bit about it? Maybe from the podium?
He there, just project.
Well, first of all, it's not really my idea, so I don't want anybody to think this is my idea. But the idea of having an overlay district first came up when the land use committee was working on the land use plan for the township. And I was chair of a committee that worked on updating our land use plan. Mr. Fair was very helpful to us, and maybe you'd want to introduce him. But he's basically in charge of planning and development in Butler County. He was very helpful to the group at that time. And when we finished our work with the land use plan, this is going back now quite a while. In fact, it was not the most recent land use revision, but it was, it was actually the land use before that. And his suggestion was perhaps the township would want to consider this overlay district. And that recommendation was made by the land use committee at that time. But it really was never, ever put into place. And so the idea has come, has arisen again. Most recently, as most of you probably know, there was a, a group that worked on zoning regulations for Ross Township to have their own zoning. That had to be approved by a vote of the presidents of the township, and it did not pass. So we do not have our own zoning. But, and David, I want you to correct me if I misspeak, please. County zoning, township zoning, you have less control over architectural details as a city would have with zoning in a municipality. I think in Ohio, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So municipalities can create zoning codes that can, can state more clearly what architectural details would be, and more specifics in terms of what things should look like. But even without us having our own zoning with an overlay district on the county zoning that we have, we can, we can do, are put in place more of those types of details. And I think if you don't have something like this in place, I think it's a good idea personally. If you don't have anything, then basically you're going to end up with more buildings that are going to be metal buildings that are going to house businesses, and they're going to have maybe a little bit of a facade on them. But basically, you're not, you're not going to have the same kind of control you have if you had an overlay district. And I think so you can shoot for a certain look, quote unquote, to your town. And somebody just can't put up whatever they want to put up. So it's, I think it's another step. And the overlay district can create a certain character, ambiance to, to your town that you can't have with just a regular zoning. Now, David, I also believe that the overlay district really would not require any building that currently exists to necessarily meet those overlay standards, or is that not correct?
Correct, but you could write in there like sometimes on a lot of our codes, if the building got burned down or something like that. They have to recreate it to new standards. You could put that in there.
So in other words, if you own a home or a business currently in the overlay district, you're not going to spend money to make that structure meet the requirements of the overlay district. Okay? So we're not saying, okay, now you're going to have to do this, do that. So that wouldn't be the case unless, as David says, the building would burn down or something like that. And then anything that would be rebuilt would want to meet the requirements of the overlay district. So I think an idea, one thing you might think about, if you're familiar with the Ameris Stop, and I know it's not the Ameris Stop anymore, it's now a shell, there at the corner of Sunshine Drive and 128. Okay, you with me? Everybody know the building I'm talking about? Okay, when that building was first built, it was built with the typical flat roof. Okay? And the owners, to make it look a little nicer, put, and I don't know if I'm using this term correctly or not, I call it a manser front on it. So it has a shingled space on it that slopes a little bit, and it's just a facade on the front of it.
It'll be like Elda.
Like, like, like was done at Elda, right. So that was done by the owners just to make it look a little nicer. So I think an overlay could require something like that, David, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yes. So you wouldn't have a building that just has a, you know, a steel building with a flat roof or something. You could require some sort of a facade on it that would have more of the ambiance or character that we'd like to see in, in our community. So I think that's kind of the idea behind the overlay district. And it's really kind of up, I think, to the group as far as what that overlay district would include or would not include. But I think, you know, let's face it, 128 is, is the front window of our township. And, you know, what kind of a front window do you want? What kind of an impression do you want to get as you travel through the heart of Ross Township? And I think there's, that's a very good question. And certainly, the overlay can help us get, get there and make our community as attractive as possible. You know, we could put, I don't know, what are some other things, David, that could be included? I mean,
Parking.
Parking, lighting, signage.
Parking, lighting, signage. Yeah, so you can have, we can make statements about parking, for example. In other words, do you want 128 in the future to look like Corrine Avenue? Where, not so much the way it is now, but the way it was, Corrine was 15 or 20 years ago, where you can just pull right off of 128 and people would just have a bunch of parking spaces right off of 128 right in front of the building. I mean, that's Corrine Avenue in the 1950s was, there were a lot of homes and things like that along there, and there's a lot of people that remember that. Now, all of a sudden, the homes got demolished and businesses built, or homes became businesses in a lot of cases.
They were going to put an airport there.
Well, there was an airport there at one time at the corner of Corrine Springville. But at any rate, you know, so we could specify here that, well, the parking needs to be back off of 128. You know what I'm saying? In other words, we could possibly, as homes, I think there will be eventually converted into businesses. So the homes will, an example would be the coffee shop, Shepherd's Ground Coffee Shop, that's an example of a home that's converted to a business. And, you know, they don't have a parking lot where you pull in straight off of 128, okay? They park back behind the business. And so you could have just a few entrances where people could pull in, and there can be like an alley that would go behind and then parking in that area so that you're not having all this direct, you know, that's, that's a safety hazard, people backing out right onto 128, parking lots and so forth. And, you know, it's, it's unsightly, it doesn't look very nice. We could specify the type of lighting that would be done, signage. If you've noticed, there's a lot of effort now in new developments where signs are what, what you might call tombstone signs, where the sign goes from the ground up and is so high. And the signs for Dollar General and Family Dollar are examples of those type of signs. And you can specify the, you know, what, how big those signs could be. But without that, you know, anybody can erect a sign way up in the air and, you know, is that, is that what you want? Probably not. But you can, you can have some control over that. You can have a little control over what things might look, what that might look like. So I guess that's, that's kind of the summary from my point of view is that at the trustee meeting that we last were at, where you, we were, there were some things being kicked around about, you know, what, what do we want to do in the township? And I think this idea was one that people thought sounded like a reasonable next step for the township would be to do the overlay district. It would be through Butler County zoning, it doesn't mean we would have a township zoning. So the township zoning would, right, David, would be the ones that would?
Yeah, be through the county zoning.
Be through the county zoning. So it's, we, it's not going to be where we're going to have to hire a township zoning administrator or anything like that. So being through the current county zoning that we have, it would be a matter of trying to just take a little bit more control over how our main corridor is going to look through our township. So that, that's kind of the idea. That's the big view, the bird's eye view of the whole thing. But David could probably speak to more detail on this and maybe even talk about some examples of where this has worked. I think Westchester, right, David, would be an example of an overlay?
42.
42 in Westchester, right. So I'll see if what he can add to this.
David Fair, Director of Butler County, Director of Development for Butler County, has been nice enough to join us tonight and maybe field some questions and bring a lot of good information from a zoning standpoint of what this can mean.
So I guess, I don't know how many years ago this is being announced, I'm dating myself. So when myself and other members of the county staff came down to Ross and helped with kind of doing a vision for the whole township, you know, we kind of asked the group, are there areas that you've been to that you really like? And is that something you want to replicate here in Ross? And I mentioned to the group, you know, areas like Liberty Township are growing, but they don't really have a downtown like Ross has. You actually have some advantages that some of these other new areas or Monroe maybe don't necessarily have. So some of the ideas that came up is, you know, we talked about in Hamilton County, downtown Montgomery, where Montgomery Inn is at the corridor through there. You've got modern businesses, there's a CVS, but it doesn't look like a CVS, it's the older architecture. Dublin, Ohio is kind of another model a lot of people like. And, you know, those things don't happen by coincidence or accident. There's a set plan that's put in place. And the legislative tool to do that is through what we call an overlay zoning district. So for those in the audience may not be familiar, since the 1950s, Ross has had zoning. And that says where you can put a business, or you can put a farm, or you can put a house. And that's been adopted for years, but it doesn't get into some of these more architectural or aesthetic items. So what would happen is you kind of keep the zoning now as it is. So if it's zoned for residential, that'll continue. If it's zoned for business, it stays a business. But you then begin to draft a set of guidelines, design guidelines. And that sort of lays on top of the existing zoning so that everybody knows what the playbook is, everybody's treated the same. But you do start to put in some of those standards for, for, you know, new construction. And we specifically put in the mixed-use zoning overlay that interior remodeling, exterior maintenance work and repairs are exempt. So we're not talking about that, we're not peeking in windows, it's all of the exterior items. A few years after that, I know you guys hired a consultant to kind of look at some of those things. I think they gave you some ideas. And if you wish to continue, the next step would be to, you're probably going to have to hire somebody to do this professionally is to start laying out those guidelines. What do you want the signage requirements to be? What do you want the lighting and parking requirements to be? And those have to be put on paper on purpose. Map what areas of the township this is going to cover. And then you'd actually go through a legislative process of adopting that. And once adopted, if somebody comes in for a building permit, we at the county staff would look at that, see whether it meets those design guidelines.
Who approves those guidelines?
It'd be our building and zoning department.
I mean, prior, before the overlay district is established, who, who says we want 75% brick, we want metal roof?
That would be you guys.
So the community would.
However you choose to.
Okay.
An open house, do a consultant, things like that. But, yeah, you would, you would create this guideline.
But it doesn't, it wouldn't go to the ballot, though, would it?
No. So in Ohio, either townships by themselves can adopt your own zoning, and you have your own residence beyond the boards, or you can work with other townships and have it under the Board of County Commissioners. So Ross is currently the latter model. Certain townships that are bigger, more urban have their own zoning rules, so like a Westchester or Liberty. So Butler County is kind of split half and half. So you guys are in a group with other townships, and you have one code book that you all follow. But the overlay district would be unique to Ross. That would be your, your guidelines.
Just to play what if, what if those were in place? The overlay district was in place, and someone came to town and wanted to put a dollar store in it.
Another one?
Yeah. Would that, that would make one of two things happen, either they wouldn't want to do it, or if they did, they would have to adhere to the guidelines that are in that overlay district to make it look the way we want it to look.
I think that's kind of one of the misconceptions with zoning is, you know, we get the calls all the time, like, why is a dollar store allowed to go in and Dollar Tree right next to them? Like, that's the free market. We don't tell who can go in, what. We can't tell whether it's a business or a residence. So if it's zoned for business, any business can go in there and then go in next to each other and may the best person win. But to your point, yes, if we had something like this overlay district in place, we can make the Dollar Tree or Dollar General look a little less like the typical store and more to kind of match the architecture of the area.
I have a question. What hypothetically, what if Family Dollar closed, closed completely, and they sold the building to someone else? Would they, if we had an overlay, would they have, the new people have to?
If that's how you want to write your guidelines, yes. Or additions and stuff like that, you'd have to write that in.
It doesn't matter prior, but after you pass the overlay, then it has to be brought up to standards.
So here we are in this meeting, what, what would the next step be? To have to get it to you?
My personal opinion is I would really hire a professional, I think, like a landscape architect or an engineering architectural firm that could kind of help you with that. It's not that it couldn't be done by a layman, maybe you've got some folks in the township that have that area expertise, but I think you would want a little bit of professional guidance.
Who, does someone have to come to us to say, let's do this, or not? Or can, can we just do it? Okay. I was under the impression that someone from the community had to say, yes, we want, or from the area would say, we want to do this.
We put in here that a group of property owners could get together, or it could be the township. So if you had some large property owners and they own six or seven properties and they wanted to come in as a group, we allow that.
Okay. How are the other, the other ones that you're familiar with, how were they started? They started from community members or?
I think, at least in Westchester, that was a lot of, from the township, because they could just see, I mean, we're going back 20 years, but they could see how Westchester was growing and some of that area along 42, Cincinnati Dayton Road, some of that. They could see how the township was changing, and they didn't want to see everything bulldozed. So they, they put requirements in about how much of the buildings had to be brick and some of the lighting and parking standards, so. That might be a good model to kind of start with.
You're talking about the area, let's say, south of 75 on Cincinnati Dayton, going past the post office?
Yeah.
Or Westchester?
Office area, yeah.
I guess we have to get a public opinion from people who live there first.
Is there anyone from that area, from this proposed district that's here tonight?
Figured so. Good.
If I look at the map, there's the old Red Street, it's not on there. I got the letter, but.
To who?
The old Red Street, it was not on there, right?
It doesn't go down to Reds, does it?
It's just down.
Both the Reds is down that way.
This is.
Well, no, I, I got the letter, and when I looked at the map, it's not, it's not down past the CNC, right?
Right.
Well, no, no, that's why I got the letter, that's why I showed up, but.
Scared?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that I was looking at that right.
It doesn't go beyond the property lines going down 128, except for Brookville.
Meadowbrook.
No, I got the letter at the business, so.
Okay.
Read these here. Anybody else? That has any?
Why didn't this go forward last time?
Why did it go forward?
Why did it not go forward? It's been discussed and reviewed for 50 years past.
Well, I think it was originally stopped, kind of fell off when zoning didn't pass. And somewhere along the line, I was talking to somebody, and they said, hey, it could have been Janice, it could have been Greg, I don't know, that said, we still have an overlay district potential for this area. Well, let's, let's bring it up at least, see if there's interest.
But, but I don't remember much moving on after previous boards spent the money and studied it, moving forward at all, or much talk about it after that, which would have been, Greg, what? 2010 and maybe earlier? Seven, eight or nine? It just, the study was done and they're, it went dormant.
Actually, the land use plan that when I first got involved was like in the 2008 time branch. That was where it was mentioned by David, this might be something you want to consider. And the various trustees at that time didn't, didn't follow up. For, I don't know what reason, none of you were on the board then. But it was, it just didn't get followed up until the consultant was hired to take a look at the possibility of that. And I can't tell you what became of that.
You're focusing on Burns Farm, more, more or less.
Oh, that was way before that, okay.
This was before that, but.
Yeah.
It was, I don't remember the name of the firm now, but the board hired a firm to look at that. They weren't calling it an overlay, they were, they were, I don't remember.
Is that Compass Point, Wendy Muller?
They purchased this during, there's leftover money, they had some leftover money from selling up the land down there here, so it's about 68 years ago.
Yeah.
And about $3,000 left over, and they decided to use it towards.
But nothing happened at that, and that might have been because there were some changes of board members at the time, and just it, it kind of fell through the cracks, maybe.
I remember Tom saying he, this was not going to be township pushed. It was, it would be, have to be business pushed to, to make the changes or whatever. So, so that, you know, you might think that's part of what he said.
I'm an L woman. I thought he did it 68 years ago, but I don't think he did that. On the board 68 years ago?
No, again, it was, it was in the late 2008, nine or 10. That's all clear. No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't take seat until 2017. For second zone, for the zoning, yes, I, we were here during that board.
In the zoning, you can look at the zoning and look at some of the guidelines we actually put in there with parking and signage and stuff like that to take a look at it, get some ideas, because we covered all that.
One of the other things I just wanted to bring up that was sort of recent, there's a PUD, Planned Unit Development, there's a PUD. There was one down on 128 that goes from Kraus Lane north a little bit. I don't know, I don't. Kraus Lane north a little bit. I don't know, I don't know the exact boundaries of it. But it includes where Waldorf is, and it includes that area that comes back from where the new Waldorf is, down to Kraus Lane. There was a post on Facebook that I put out a while back, that someone wanted a gas station there. And we kind of found out about that just at the last minute. And because there was a PUD there, which in some ways is, would it be fair to say it's similar to that? We, we were able to go to the developer, the county, the county engineer's office was there, ODOT was there, there's a bunch of people there. The sucker was ready to go. And I said, we need to hold up here a minute before this gets going, because there's a PUD here, and a gas station, and it's not a permitted use in that PUD. That's the only reason it's not here. They called, the guy, the developers called me twice, and wanted to talk me into it. And I said, nope, not happening. So I talked to the people that they had hired to kind of conceptualize what they wanted to build. And I spoke to her last week, and she said, no, there's been no other contact. So it sounds like a done deal. They're not going to, they're not going to build a gas station there. They won't put anything there without a gas station in this group. And they, they got some money. They own a lot. So like what happened down there, this gives the township and the county the option to say, maybe yes, you can build it, but it has to look this way, or you're allowed to do this, but you can't do this, kind of thing. So that's really what it's about. It's akin to a PDD. Go ahead, Mr. Fair, I'm sorry.
No, I can just answer any questions. You know, nobody likes regulations. I mean, but I think, you know, having a set, set of guidelines gives people that own property their confidence that if I make this investment, I know my neighbor next to me is not going to sell out, it's going to look like a Dollar General, you know. So there's the benefit to the property owners, yeah, I'm agreeing to take on some regulations, but I'm also getting some confidence in my investment, is, you know, everything else around me is going to look the same, too.
I'm sure the person whose house was now next to Dollar General was probably not happy.
Hey, I shop at Dollar General, you know, they're not bad. It's just the right, and it has to be in the right spot, and look the right way. It's your community, and you should have some, say so in it.
Do I also have any questions for Mr. Fair, or any others?
I've seen other states do similar thing with an overlay district, I'll not call that, but then it opens up the homeowners in the area to grants to want to, like, improve in a historical remainder of the properties. Does that open up the township to anything like that, by doing, doing such a thing?
I don't know anything specifically grant related, but, but something I will mention, because it's, we're in that cycle right now. We have something called the Community Development Block Grant, that we run through our office, and that put in some sidewalks out here. So we do have another round of funding for available. I think we're taking applications through November. So that would be something you might want to encourage your, your local officials. You can use that grant funding for, like, it wouldn't be private investment, it'd be more like public investment. So that might be something to consider.
For that block grant, we use a lot of that money for our road department, so that there's not a road levy, or never has been the last. So for the time being, that's what, what grants we get from them, that's what we use it for.
But Ross did use that money to put the sidewalks in all around, and just think about that little bit of an improvement, and, you know, it's really made a difference. Not only for our community, look, the way it looks, but also make it walk, walkable. You know, I've seen a lot of people walking those sidewalks. So something like that really can make a difference.
It really, you write the regulations as strict or as lenient as you want. You customize your guidelines. So that becomes adopted by the, by the group. So, you know, that's one of the nice things about the flexibility. And I also want to stress, the underlying zoning doesn't change. So if you bought a business piece of property, continues to be a business, it's just, we're gonna have some additional regulations on these design elements.
Would they, would it's such a district, make it harder to go from residential to business, if somebody bought a property and wanted to, you know, envision putting a business there?
Yeah, I don't think that would necessarily be a hindrance, no.
But they would, if they did do it as a business, they would still have to comply with whatever the district.
Right. I have a question. Please. Dave, because it's a state route, 128, what happens when the state comes in to change
the highway? If they decide that they're going to make a different kind of exchange, or they're going to widen the road, or whatever, as a township, what recourse do we have? Do we have any at all? Or do we just have to go with the flow?
Internet domain, they take it.
That's what I thought. But that's going to make a difference to all of us, too.
It's on the point.
Yeah.
On its website.
I, I think that that's something we have to think about, too, because the way Ross is set up right now, it'll take a lot of people's yards going down. And that's going to make a difference on businesses moving in, too. It's going to make the property smaller in order to get parking.
Certainly, ODOT listens to the local constituents, too. And then again, if I go back to the city of Montgomery, that's a state route through there. It's parking, and, you know, so, so it can be done. I don't think, you know, my experience has been, ODOT is not flush with money right now. So my personal opinion is that, you know, there would have to be enough traffic out here to warrant it's going to four lanes or two lanes.
And they would want money from the local government to assist in that, and we truly don't have that either.
Most of those ODOT projects are already planned out 10, 15 years in advance. So it's a concern, but I'm not sure, you know, we've been talking about this for 20 years that I have.
Yes. And Duke is the same way. I spoke to them many years ago, when this overlay first happened, and they said they'll not touch a line down there on their money. It would, it would be ours. And it would be millions of dollars to move any electrical lines, either east or west or underground. Same with the gas. They wouldn't voluntarily do it on their dime for anything.
Anybody else want to chime in? The ones that live here, that live on 128, are your feelings are okay to go with it, or you don't like it, or want to ponder on it a little bit longer?
I think, I'll speak for myself. I think we would just want to confirm, one, definitely it doesn't put requirements on us. I'm going to speak for everybody for ourselves, to paint our house a certain color, you know, not put bushes or yard, you know, whatever. And be able to, we're trying to preserve the historical aspect of our home anyway. But, you know, we're working on the inside first and the outside, so I don't have to, tomorrow I'll be like, oh, you have to fix your shutter. Isn't this my plan, but not tomorrow. And then that you're not, you know, forced us to change the existing zoning of our home art, it's kind of odd that that's not a forced change.
We were strictly looking at new construction.
And that can be written in?
It can be written in. Be very clear about that.
Okay. So there's a lot of flexibility with, with that, being able to really write in, no, we're not going to do what, what she just asked.
You could specifically say, we are not going to dictate paint colors, we're not dictating shutters. But you might say, we do want residential structures, new ones to have a front porch. But we're not going to tell you what it looks like and how many seating it has, but, but the idea of having a front porch, because all the other homes have a front.
But that would be new construction.
That would be in new construction, yeah.
No classic fake flowers in the front.
Does that?
You know, like I said, you know, if you don't do something different, you're going to get more of what you got. And if you don't like what you got, you are.
Does that satisfy your concern?
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to speak for everyone else.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're on the road, like, on the road, so.
Okay.
There's a selling on.
Okay. Moving on.
Anyone else?
Go ahead.
I'm concerned, we own the business on them. And we're getting to an age, at some point, we're going to think about probably trying to find somebody else to buy it. I don't want to have something happen that encompasses them to do a bunch of work, just because they want to take over a business, you know.
Is a property tran, can it be written in that a property transfer does not mean you have to now adhere to what the new rules are?
Yeah, you could write that in there, and it wouldn't apply anyway. We don't do it on a property transfer. It'd have to be like a burned down, or it's new construction.
Pollution brought back up.
Does that answer your question, sir?
So it's also written into it that way, that transfer of ownership does not trigger, you have to.
Okay. All right, moving on to administration, building, and police station security. Is that you, Thomas? He brought it up before. Tom?
Oh, he, he had just brought us some ideas of this right here.
So.
I got a, I got a small follow up on what the chief, chief was talking about for some lighting, lighting in the back parking lot. His future intent is to start using the access in the back lot from School Road to get away from traffic here, or direct access if the garage door's up, from something occurring on 128. And it's a, it's a fiasco to get out of here, go out this parking lot, make a left certain times of the day. So he's talking about the back lot and the darkness of it. So on Sunday, I met with TS Bolt Electrical to discuss our electrical issues in this building for the outback. I was going to replace a vapor light, which is like a street light that's bolted to the back of the building. And he has a light that will fit that receptacle, it will be the new eye on top for daylight and daylight to dusk.
15 bucks.
And the wiring is not up to code going to that light. It actually comes out of conduit exposed in, for interior electric lines. So that would be replaced. And talk was using the center light pole, which we had walked, abandoning, abandoning the light poles going down the sidewalk in the property line, because we don't want to be bad neighbors with light pollution. We just want security that any police officer, or any employee going out there after dark can see if somebody's lurking around for bad ideas. So the idea is two LEDs, one pointing to the left, if you're looking backwards towards property line on Bella Vista, which would be a widespread light to basically cover the whole parking lot. And facing School Road, a narrower beam that it won't protrude on the School Road, and again, bother those and employee, or bother those residents that are in that area. That would be, there's four lights on that post, two downlights to that point out. And again, there's probably very few people in here that ever remember that being a used car lot, myself and the Youngs, many, many years ago. So that's what all that lighting was back there for. Now, now comes the fun part. After going through the building and trying to figure out where the power goes out in the backyard, it's in the air compressor room. When the generator was brought down, that electrical company cut the wires off going into the box for the lights going out back. They're all there, all the wires are marked. And the electrician can pull electric from one of the air compressors that, that is not used. There's two air compressors, both with 240 amps. So that's just a five foot distance. But then there is, let's see, probably 12 wires that go out into the back lot. Have to find the two wires that go straight up to that pole, since we're abandoning the others. Talked to the police sergeant, he would like one of those air compressors come on, because whenever you turn it on, it blows the breakers. Those air compressors are probably not even worth trying to get running, probably be cheaper just to buy a battery operated Milwaukee air compressor and that. But that's, that's where we stand. Yes, we can get lighting outback. We've found the wires. They look good inside the building, they look good in the light post. So he has every idea that underground inside conduit, they are probably also in good shape. He's got to put together a bid, and he was going to work on that in a few days. I would, I was hoping I'd have it tonight, but I was unable to get ahold of him. So hopefully by first of November, I'll have, I'll have some kind of what it would cost for the two LED light heads and hooking the wires back up. But you can, you can see in the top of this electrical box, which is about three and a half feet long, that there's a hole in it that big. And right above it is the inverter for the generator. So they, they stole to get into the building to get it backfeed the electric that way.
You said compressors?
There's two air compressors that the truckers had.
I know those, but what are, why would we use those?
For, for air. Dave wanted, they want to be able to, be able to air his tires up here, if he has a low tire or a flat, versus trying to get it to one of the gas stations.
We could waste $100, you wouldn't even worry about it.
But once he told me that was blowing the breaker, there's, there's going to be something wrong with them motors, or at least one of the motors. But we can look into maybe getting one of them running, if the guy will throw that in. But that's where we're standing at. We can get lights out there. At least we found how to, how to get hooked back up.
But that would be run directly to the panel, right?
Yeah, there's a breaker box.
Okay.
One of seven in that same room.
And the, but the police department wants some type of a compressor for?
They would like one of the air compressors to run, so they can get air. Again, if it's too expensive.
Yeah.
We'd go to Home Depot and buy a little battery operated one.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right, anything else from the board? Let me ask, just Keith, a little bit more about that.
Yes.
Come in my head. But for security purposes, bringing in prisoner, and for safety purposes, coming out here. The chief wants to have that, wants to have the entrance for the officers to come in off of School Road on the backside. Correct?
Yes, basically get away from the public during, you know, spring, summer, and fall with the clubs being open.
Yeah.
Or, again, like he spoke, a police cruiser going out here, emergency, and a child running in between with a, with a brand new ice cream cone, running in between a car.
And we should clean that place up.
Trying, trying to get away from a potential accident.
How are they going to get in the gate?
He, he spoke about the future, putting an electric gate back there.
Okay.
Right, right now, and he spoke about that also, the two gates are open for all the trainings that go on in the back of the building through Norris.
Right.
And until we would move along, we could just leave the gates open. As long as it's lit up, it's, it's less of a big turn to try to hide in the dark. And that would be something for trustees after the first year that, that would work on that issue of an electric gate. We know we can get electric out there. There's another spot we could steal electric from right by that door.
So if they're doing electric out to the, you said the center pole?
Center pole.
Is it closer to go from the center pole to the gate, if we want to put an electric gate out there? Because we want to have, we want to have a large enough?
It would be less trenching. I mean, there, he's also going to, there is an outlet there, ground fault. He's also going to make that work again. So if anybody has to, you know, for the training purposes out there, wants to plug in their cell phone, or whatever, jumper cables, battery charger, he's going to make that work again.
But whatever he does out to that pole, then, should be a large enough gauge wire, enough amperage.
240.
To run a gate.
Hmm.
If we decide to do that. All right. That's all, sorry.
Public participation. Individuals who wish to address the board must speak from the podium and state their name and address for the record. Point should be made clearly and concisely within the five-minute limit. No one's period, no one's time can be yielded over to another. Comments should be directed to the board with courtesy and respect. Any responses from the board will be delivered in kind. Anybody would like to address the board?
I'd just like to finish up by saying, I hope that you'll consider moving forward with the overlay district. I think the trustees have the ability to do this. And I want to encourage you to, to move forward with it. Maybe you want to wait till after the elections. But I think, you know, we just, there's no point kicking it down the road to can down the road yet. That's happened now for the last 15 years or so. And meanwhile, things are happening here. They're changing, things are being built. You know, just encourage you to consider moving forward with the idea.
Thank you, Greg.
I second that.
You said that?
Right.
Okay, okay, I didn't.
Little brother backing a big brother. All right, closing action. Is there any further business discussion before the board?
I have none.
None.
All right. Move for the adoption motion 25-117 to adjourn the meeting. Work session needs a second.
Second.
Discussion. Discussion, roll call.
Steve McGurn.
Yes.
Steve Bellard.
Yes.
Steve Young.
Yes, sir. Next meeting will be November the 6th, 6 o'clock here at the Township Building. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Should get out.